As you can see, we have a very full agenda tonight, so we're gonna try to keep it moving as smoothly as we possibly can. First order of business, if Clerk Segras could call the roll.
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek is absent. Lieutenant Buck reflect Clerk Segras is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I am present.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Call for a motion to approve the agenda with one minor change.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda, but we move G-18 to G-0.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two sets of minutes for approval. Could I call for a motion to approve both sets of June 11th and June 18th, 2019?
Some support.
Those in favor of the motion presented, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now would be the time in our agenda for the citizens' non-agenda items. Would there anybody like to make public comment? Yes, sir. If you would, please approach the podium. We ask that you state your name, address, and then limit remarks to three minutes if we can.
Thank you. Anthony Couchy, 7410 Hillsborough Drive, and that kinda gives you a clue as to why I'm here for tonight. As you know, the closure of Morton Taylor between Lombardi and Warren has caused... Okay? This is being done by traffic going up all the way to the closures where they have plenty of signs that says the road is closed for them to turn around and go back to Joy Road, which is another main road which they should use, not a side street, okay? I have traffic coming down on Hillsborough. I'm guessing doing about 40, 45 miles an hour. I had a motorcycle that came down doing wheelies. This is at 10 o'clock Saturday morning where the kids are out playing. Traffic continues to come by at the rate of whatever traffic is perpetrated on Morton Taylor at that time, all the way southbound to cross Warren. So they find it convenient for them to just come through our side street and detour all the way to Warren. My concern is, why hasn't there any attempt to put a "no detour" sign on these side streets? I've been to areas where there were roads closures, and I've seen many signs that says "for local traffic only, no detours allowed." I called Public Safety, and I was put on hold for three or four times. So did my wife. So with that, I remind you that we still have a lot of young kids playing on the street. And I just feel that...I don't know when this is supposed to be completed, but traffic comes down at the rate of, like I said, if you can picture Warren traffic, that's what Hillsborough Drive is looking right now, okay? Thank you very much.
Can I ask you one question, sir? Is it primarily, is it the heaviest during rush hour, meaning folks in the morning?
It varies. There's more during rush hour in the morning that varies. It tapers off a little bit about 1:00 in the afternoon, then it picks up again. The amount of traffic that comes down varies. Sometimes you might have about 10 or 12 cars bumper to bumper coming across. People are waiting in their driveway for traffic to clear so they can clear the way because you have parking on one side, and sometimes it's very difficult to see traffic coming in, especially at that rate of speed, okay?
Thank you.
So I just don't know where, whose ball, who dropped the ball on this. I mean, a sign could have been easily put up saying "no detour allowed." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could we do a selective enforcement, sir? Thank you. Very good. I do appreciate that. Go ahead. Mr. Miller?
We have a street sweeper we bought to township, correct? I'd like to know why it's not being utilized on Canton Center Road, Lilly Road, and Sheldon Road possibly. Some of the landscapers or people trimming grass blow that stuff out on the street, and it plugs up the sewers, for one thing. I'd like to know if that can be utilized, and why it's not being utilized. We bought the equipment, I choose it. I haven't seen it out this year. Secondly, you have a tractor with a, should I say, brush hog on the side of it, like it cuts grass on the side of the road. I haven't seen that out being utilized. You buy that equipment, and then I don't see it utilized at all this year. The weeds are starting to get around the corners where you can't see traffic. And possibly, if you could be good enough to find out a completion date on the Lilly Road Bridge, since they did start it finally after about two years. And one other thing I'd like to know, we have a excavator, Public Works Department does. They bought it used several years ago. It reaches 25 foot on it. I'd like to know how that's being utilized, especially when the sewer taps, and usually around 15 foot in a township, which a Caterpillar backhoe would reach that, with a 15-foot reach. I'd like to know why that was bought possibly back for around $75,000 used. And that the sewer lines going down the main road, Ford Road, Palmer Road, and Hagerty Road, for example, that's all Detroit Water Department to be serviced if there's any problems with it. I don't know why we bought that cat excavator. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, George. Is there any additional public comments? Any additional...yes, please. Mr. Parker?
Bob Parker, 6806 Weathersfield. I just wanted to comment, the sweeper has been used. We've had it in our sub. We've done it on Hanford all the way down. They've used it several times that I've seen personally. So from that report, I just wanted to mention that. And the Drainage Department has worked with us on drain issues with some of their new equipment. So just wanted to mention that, that we...I personally have seen that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Any...please, Mr. Grandin. And again, name, address, and then limit to three minutes if we could.
Thank you. My name is Rob Grandin. I live at 6738 Burnham Drive, Canton. Growing up as a son of a Detroit Police Officer and as a veteran of the Coast Guard, public safety has always been very important to me. I apologize that I wasn't here last week to see the Public Safety Department update as it conflicted with a prior family engagement. However luckily, we strive here to have transparent governance, and it was on video, and I was able to watch it online. And I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees for placing those online for residents to watch. During the months of April and May, I had the privilege to attend the 2019 Canton Township Citizens Police Academy, presented by the Canton Public Safety Department. And I want to give a huge thank you to the Canton Public Safety Department, Canton Police Department, Fire, and EMS for developing that great program for the residents of Canton. The information was very thorough, took us through all kinds of aspects of public safety, from classroom presentation and instruction, conducting ride-alongs with the Fire Department and the Police Department, School Resource Officer Program Information, Special Operations Tactical, K-9s, community policing policies, and many others. The Academy also gave us hands-on instruction with both Fire and Police Departments, which was the highlight of many of the attendees' experience. And I recommend the program to any Canton resident that's interested in learning about Public Safety Department and all of the various tasks that the Public Safety Department is charged with in keeping our community safe. I wanted to thank Director of Public Safety Joshua Meyer. He's not here, but if you could pass that along for me, I would greatly appreciate that. Also, very special thanks to Public Records, our Public Relations Officer Patty Estalink for making the eight weeks so entertaining, and to Executive Assistant Barbara Crusoe for all of the behind-the-scenes works that she does that makes that program possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, next item on the agenda would be Treasurer Slavens, payment of the bills.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
If the motion is presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now we have a special hearing. Okay. Special hearing, petition to appeal soliciting, canvassing, and peddling license denial, Chapter 54, Article 2, Section 54-33 for Mr. Masood Kaffai, Cooley's Ice Cream of Michigan. Describe...I should describe the process now? Okay, so I'm gonna read a very brief summary, and then after the summary, we will allow...Mr. Kaffai? Is that proper?
That's my dad.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Allow 10 minutes to address the board, and then the board will be allowed 10 minutes to ask any questions if there are any. And then you'll have a final 10 minutes to speak if it's necessary. And then at the end of the conclusion of that 30-minute period, the board will vote on one of two motions, either denying or approving the request, okay? So in summary, on May 12th, 2019, Mr. Masood Kaffai, Cooley's Ice Cream, submitted an application for a soliciting, canvassing, and peddling license for his ice cream truck business. The license application was denied on May 28th, 2019 by the Township Clerk, citing failure to comply with the requirements of Section 54-33 B6 of the Township Code of Ordinances, which allows the clerk to deny any license to a person if the applicant or activity licensed constitute an apparent danger to the health, safety, and welfare to the people of the township. Public Safety indicated that Mr. Masood Kaffai's police records have reflected an incident in 2013 involving reckless driving that allegedly resulted in the confrontation between the applicant and the other drivers, and that is, I believe, the primary reason for the original denial. So Mr. Kaffai, if you would now like to speak, now would be the time. I'm sorry?
Should we open the public hearing?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Supervisor, I move to open the appeals hearing to the denial of the 2019 license for Cooley's Ice Cream, Michigan at 7:12 PM.
Support.
Okay, those in favor of opening the public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Sir, now would be the time if you'd like to speak.
I'm here to speak for my dad. He was cited reckless driving about seven years ago, and we went to court, and the case was not dismissed for not having enough information, and he was given reckless driving. Passed by about four years, five years, no issue with his driving whatsoever, and he was given Canton Township license to continue on with selling ice cream. And ever since then, he has not had any tickets or any issue driving ice cream truck in Canton, Michigan. And recently, last...this year, when he submitted the application, he was denied for the application. I don't understand why he was given the...four years ago, after three years of a ticket, but now it's been an issue again. Again, my dad had a ticket. It was...he was at the stop sign. There was a car in front of him. He was not able to communicate. He got in front of the car, kind of yelled at the window, making sure the lady who was driving was okay, and drove by, kind of in front of her. And it was a misunderstanding that it was a reckless driving, but all he was trying to do, make sure the person who was in front of him was okay. So he drove off, and he was cited reckless driving. It was no intention of, you know, causing trouble or not following the rules, but unfortunately, he couldn't meet those requirements. So we wanna...he wants to be able to explain to see, ever since then, he has not had any issue with Canton or any other city, Ann Arbor, Michigan, Ypsilanti Township, and he would like to see if he could be giving the ice cream truck license again. And you could look at his record. He had never had any problem ever since then, and he's been a good driver and behaving a lot better. That's all I have to say. I'm young, but he's got...
All right, so that was only three minutes, so we've got plenty of time that we can tag on the end if you need to. Does the board have any questions?
I read somewhere where he was selling ice cream without a renewed license back in 2014. Is that correct?
Yes.
He was giving the license back. Again, it's been a while. What...
Was...he was selling ice cream, and a patron had noticed that his license was for 2013, I believe, if I can find...
He had...
But he didn't have a renewed...
Had an expired license in his truck, but he was giving the license to sell in Canton. It was just not put on the glasses, and he was...he actually provided that next day because he was stopped by a township officer, and he provided those information. He had ice cream license throughout the years here, never had any issue with selling ice cream without the license.
Wasn't posted in the truck, though?
Yes. By law, he has to post a license on the truck.
Mark?
Was there an infraction in 2014 in Pittsfield Township for failure to yield and no proof of insurance?
Always had insurance. Always.
I've got a couple of questions. First one is for Clerk Segras. So the infraction or the reckless driving was seven years ago, and then, let's say, five, four years ago, did the previous clerk allow or issue a license again in Canton?
I believe so.
Okay, so after the infraction, he was given a license a couple of years after the fact, and then I guess that brings me back to public safety. Do we have any records of any driving infractions post...when would he have been reissued by Canton Township? 2014, 16?
I'm sorry?
The years are jumbled up for me. I don't...what year did we...after the reckless driving, did we actually give him the license to sell ice cream again again? So we...
So he received a license the next year?
The very next year. All right, and that next year was what year? That was...
2014.
2014.
The incident occurred, I think, July... July 23rd, 2013.
Okay, got it. All right. So since 2014, in the last five years, have there been any driving infractions whatsoever out that I'm aware of? Question was, were there post-2014, in the last five-year period, bringing us to today, any driving infractions in Canton Township or anyplace really?
So if you look at the...in the backup, in the...when he submitted his driving record, there is a...one infraction that occurred two days after this incident in Plymouth, so 7/20...so this incident occurred 7/26, 2013. On 7/28, 2013, there was a failure to yield in Plymouth. On 9/20 of 2014, there was an accident in Pittsfield Township between two vehicles. And then in Ann Arbor, and that was a failure to yield. So there was a failure to yield in Ann Arbor that resulted in an accident, a failure to yield two days after the question in Plymouth, which was also a failure to yield. And that's on page 20 of your board packet.
Let me get to that, so I'm on some things where... Had a horrific string from 13 to 14, all five years ago. And the past five years are clean. Have you been doing business selling ice cream in other communities the past five years? In what communities are you selling ice cream? Licensed to sell ice cream?
Absolutely. Only Ypsilanti and Canton, Michigan.
Not licensed in Canton today, but...
Correct. Yep. Ypsilanti, yes.
Has he been selling ice cream the last five years in Ypsilanti? Yeah, what I'm trying to do is get a correlation between his driving record and his work history the last five years.
Every five years he was selling ice cream in Ypsilanti Township.
Five-year history of no incidents, and he's selling ice cream in other communities without incident. He did have a rough patch there, for sure. No doubts about it.
Yep. That is correct. Yes, so typically, we wouldn't go back this far looking at cases, but when you read the incident report, that was kind of the...we envisioned that scenario playing out inside of Heritage Park, and that was kind of where we said this should go to the board. This could potentially be a public help, or, you know, a public safety issue. If you read the incident report, the jerking of the wheel towards the other vehicle, you know, going in and around inappropriately the vehicle at the stop sign, vocalizing, so that was, you know, it wasn't necessarily the impeding traffics, even the impeding traffics that resulted in an accident two days after the incident. It was the kind of the nature of the behavior described in what amounted to basically a road rage incident that we were concerned about inside of, like, Canton Township parks.
Clerk Segras?
Have we given him permits every year since 2014?
I don't have that record, but I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah. We...public safety has been more thorough in recent...this year in looking back at...so there are things that are coming up that perhaps weren't coming up in searches before.
Okay.
So there's been a string of denials.
And what power do we have to revoke it if a new incident occurs with prosecution?
Sorry?
If there were a new incident, such as the ones back in 2013, would we have the right to revoke the permit at any time after that? Do you know?
Yeah. Yeah, so we could pull a peddler license.
We can pull it.
It would amount to public safety having...kind of keeping track of that, and that might be, you know, that'd be something that we'd have to do.
And we would see it next year if it happened this year in...
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, when they do the search next year.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
What I'm struggling with, group, is the...yeah, he had a lousy period in 1314, then the last five years have been clean. We did issue license for multiple years after the incidents without incident, and Ypsilanti's been doing business the last five years without incident. So...yeah, it's second...
I'll just intervene real quick because as a mom and a grandma, I know how kids can jump out in front, and just with...if you read page 26, I mean, he was driving quite fast, 50 to 60 miles an hour is what this says. So I would...I just worry about safety of children and ice cream truck because kids are excited when they see an ice cream truck. So maybe something hasn't happened, but in the past, that aggressive driving makes me nervous, and I'm cautious because I'm a grandma.
I've got a grandson, too, so, yeah.
What was the outcome of the 2014 road rage case? Was he prosecuted? Was there punishment or guilty or...
Yep, so he has the...is it careless or reckless driving on his...so the result was a charge. He said reckless driving.
Right, the charge, but then what happened?
35th District Court.
Right.
Yeah, so that's on...yeah, so he would have pled guilty.
No, he was charged, but did he plead guilty? Was there a sentence or...
Wild.
Civil infraction, not a criminal infraction. Oh, I know where I'm leaning, so I don't know how we're gonna do this. Mike, do we...all right. Any additional questions? Well, let's see, my thing ran out here. Are there any other additional board questions or comments at this point? John?
2014, you get...there's an incident, reckless driving. There's been no contact with law enforcement since then.
Correct.
Had a license to sell ice cream, 14, 15, 16.
Correct.
Would you like to make additional comment?
I would just say that I'm inclined to give another chance for this year with the knowledge that we need safe driving, and it can be pulled at any time with any kind of infraction. That's just my opinion, but I'm only one of seven, so...
That's where I'm leaning, too. I don't know. John, do you have...
If there's another incident, we're gonna pull the license, if we approve it tonight. One incident, a half an incident. It gets pulled.
Very careful driver. I'm shocked that he had a reckless because I always complain, Dad, speed up, speed up. So he's very...and I know he's got the ice cream mentality because he's careful with kids, and I understand your point. I've never seen my dad driving fast anywhere. He's always cautious, looking for kids, even when he's driving with his personal car. So absolutely, I can assure that he's...
I just think we have precedent the last five years that he's been delivering with no incident.
I tend to agree with Justice Snyderman.
Caution, because it only takes one time for a child to get injured.
Of course. Every day of the week.
And I think, you know, for me, the nature...the fact that it happened so long ago, and there's been no incident since then, with the exception of not having the license in 2014, and a person from the clerk's staff making the complaint, so a person who has access to the records of who is a licensed ice cream truck driver, making that complaint to Public Safety is definitely a big deal that's happening a year after the incident, and the fact that the other vehicle had three children in it at the time. So, yeah, if the person in that, in that report, makes his way out onto the road again, that's a problem, you know? And not to mention just the fact that road rage in general can turn very violent very quickly. That concerns me. But there has been no incident in a while, but this needed to come to the board. I didn't feel comfortable with the recommendation of Public Safety, you know, overruling that, and then there would be an incident. I wanted this board to be able to weigh in and not have me do that.
Thank you. All right, so...
Sounds like I can make a motion.
Okay, please do.
Well, Mr. Supervisor, I move to close the public hearing at 7:29.
Support.
If you favor closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Third motion is...
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board of Trustees...let me get it. Sorry. I move that the determination of the Board of Trustees upon hearing all the evidence submitted and reviewing documents is to approve the appeal and reverse the clerk's denial of a 2019 license for Cooley's Ice Cream. Am I?
Second. If the motion is presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chris tomorrow, what's the next step for him?
Half an incident. Half an incident.
Absolutely. No incident.
Make sure you display that permit on the window.
Yeah, keep that license in the window, too.
Absolutely.
Good night, guys. Thank you. Good night, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great night, thank you.
All right, moving on, we now have a public hearing for the approval of the 2019 CDBG program year and actual action plan.
Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing to hear a comment on the Advisory Council recommendations for the fiscal year 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program.
Support.
Summary, the CB, CDBG Advisory Council submitting recommendations for projects and project funding for the program year 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program. The Department of Housing and Urban Development requires an annual action plan be submitted by August fifteenth, 2019 for the program year. The annual action plan has been available to the public since May thirtieth and a thirty-day public comment period, and this meeting represents our second public hearing. Is there any public comment at this time? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any board...
Oh, I was just gonna ask in the, if you could read the allocations-
Sure, absolutely.
-just so people can hear them. Thank you.
I will do that. The goal of the CDBG program is to assist low-income and moderate-income Canton residents. The program year 2019 program is consistent with past year's programs and includes a mixture of public service agencies and construction projects. The thirty-day public comment period for 2019 will end June thirtieth, and all comments will be recorded and submitted to HUD. The total CDBG budget for the program year 2019 is four hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The recommended projects are First Step, thirteen thousand, eighteen, eight hundred dollars; Neighborhood Legal Services, thirteen thousand, eight hundred; Wayne Metropolitan Community Action Agency, thirteen thousand, eight hundred; Canton Youth Connection Programs, nine thousand, fifty-five dollars; Program Administration, sixty-seven thousand, two seventy-four; ADA Projects, seventy-five thousand; Housing Rehabilitation, hundred thousand; and Heritage Park Accessibility Playground, a hundred and twenty thousand. That, that's the total of the four twelve, seven twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Are any additional board comments or questions? Okay, this material we've all seen before. Call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Supervisor, I move to close, close the public hearing.
Favor closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have a couple other model resolutions here.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to adopt the 2019 Annual Action Plan and authorize the submission of the 2019 Annual Action Plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second. Favor the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, now we have our consent calendar, which we will ask Clerk Segretz to read as a single motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the consent calendar as presented with item C one, consider the reappointment to the Downtown Development Authority Board of Diane Koji. Item C two, a request budget amendment for WTA, or W T U A, Western Township Utility Authority, capital expansion costs. Item C three, request to approve Office Three Sixty-five email service renewal. Item C four, consider approving payment of annual Western Wayne County Mutual Aid Association dues. And finally, item C five, consider the approval of budget amendments for the Community Improvement Fund.
Support.
Favor the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we're gonna move to item, what was G eighteen is now item G zero. Get down to her, there we go. Okay, approval of the appointment of Municipal Services Director.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the appointment of Jade Smith to Municipal Services Director effective July second, two thousand and nineteen.
Support.
In summary, forty-nine people applied for the Municipal Services Director position. The top five most qualified candidates participated in an extensive Assessment Center process on May seventh, similar to the process that was used to select Director Tim Foss, former Director Tim Foss. Upon successful completion of the Assessment Center testing, the top three strongest candidates were interviewed by myself and HR Manager Karine Conley. Upon conclusion of the interviews, Jade Smith was selected as the top candidate. On June nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the Merritt Commission approved the certification of the highest three certified candidates on the eligibility list for the Municipal Services Director position as presented. On June nineteenth, the Merritt Commission also approved the starting salary of a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars as permitted under the Rule Four Two Four One A of the Merritt Commission Human Resources Policy Manual for Jade Smith to become our new Municipal Services Director. Mr. Smith is in the audience this evening, and if the Board has any questions for him or comments, now would be the time.
I'll start.
Yeah, go ahead Jade, if you join us at the podium. And also because I didn't do it when we came in tonight, can you spin it so like it's on a forty-five? Yeah, there you go, that's your first, thank you.
My first official duty? Good evening.
Good evening, well, welcome aboard. We were, at the request of the trustees, we were given your resume, which is very impressive. I'm excited to see that you have a strong background both in the private and public sector with financial, with the financial background. Your team-driven management, which is really important, especially as Canton is growing. I know in the past I've met with Tim Foss, our old director and our finance director on projects that I had with the Water Department. So I'm looking forward to working with you, and I hope you stop by our department, the Treasurer's Office, and meet my team. And I look forward to working with some projects with you.
Absolutely, I'm looking forward to working with everybody in every department.
Welcome, nice to meet you. Although I probably should have voted no on moving this item up because your first test should have been, if you could wait till the end and sit through the whole meeting.
I'll stay.
I'm, I'm sure you've sat through a few in your previous positions. So just, I was impressed, of course, with the resume, but also with your cover letter and the way you said, in these days, we need to think outside the box in all areas, not just funding, but in how we deliver services and also technology. As you probably have heard, we passed a roads millage. And I know, I'm sure you'll be asked about that a lot. But one thing I'm concerned about, and all the board is, and also trustee Graham Hudak is not here tonight, is cities of the future and technology. And so one thing I, I will want us to discuss is how we can integrate what we're doing with improving our roads with technology as well. I think we have an opportunity on Ford Road and Michigan Avenue especially. So that's, that's something that I'm interested in discussing with you.
Absolutely.
Great, welcome, and I look forward to working with you.
I just wanna say welcome, your resume was very impressive. I know the city of Milan and city of Westland, since they are cities, they do have roads departments, which we don't hear, we don't have here. We work with contractors, but I'd be interested in talking with you in the future one day about your input on our roads improvement plan and what we can do to improve life for our residents in Canton as far as our roads network is concerned.
Absolutely.
You have some big shoes to fill, Tim Foss has been here for a while, a hell of a guy. I'm sure you'll do a fine job. We look forward to working with you. And as Steve, you'll find Steve is interested in sidewalks and blacktop. If you do that, he'll be happy, keep him happy.
John, John likes ice cream, so...
Ice cream.
Should take some notes.
Welcome on board.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, so the, been a long time coming, excited to have you join us. Interesting to me how close-knit the government community is. Coming from the automotive industry, you know, there's significant people moving around in the industry. Everybody kinda knows about it, same thing here. And it's, the feedback I'm getting from the team members is all positive, so the sooner the better. Thank you for joining us, Jade.
Yep, next Tuesday.
Have a motion, and we had a second. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard Jade. Item G one. Consider Amendment, the Appendix A Zoning Code of Ordinances Establishing Airport-Related Businesses as Special Land Use in the LI Light Industrial District and Establishing Site Development Standards for Said Use.
Mr. Supervisor, this is in the form of two motions, by the way. Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of an ordinance for a proposed amendment to Sections six point zero two B and six, two-two, twenty-two point zero two B of Appendix A Zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the Charter Township of Canton as provided in the attached ordinance.
Support.
In nineteen ninety, comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance allowed for small aircraft landing fields as a special land use at the General Industrial District, in the General Industrial District. Prior to ninety, there was also special lands used LI two, the Light Industrial District, and McCann Helicopter Services received a special land use for building on Rhonda Drive in the mid nineteen eighties for their business under this previous small aircraft landing field classification. They wish to build and expand their business in a new building proposed on a vacant site on the east side of Lily Road adjacent to Metatal Airport. Since the zoning code specifically calls out their use as a small aircraft landing field in the General Industrial District only, the use cannot be considered in the Light Industrial District as it's written today. Staff has evaluated the code and proposed to redefine the use to clarify the actual types of businesses that can be considered in the Light Industrial District. The ordinance change also includes some general performance criteria for airport-related businesses to ensure compatibility with other permitted light industrial uses. Are there any board comments or questions?
I guess my comment is that it was hard for me to understand the implications of this. I'm not against it, but I wasn't really sure if this was just us saying that we just need to rezone it because it's, because it, it's not in what was done thirty years ago in the zoning. I don't know, I was gonna ask Jeff tonight, but...
That is it, it's a tactical issue, is we've got McMahon Helicopter, which is a very successful business located in Canton.
Are they at the, on the airport property, is that, okay?
Right adjacent to it.
Adjacent to, there was no map or anything?
They were on the General Industrial side, so now there's a piece of land that's vacant where they wanna expand what they're doing, it's light industrial today. So the rules that we set up thirty years ago says, no, you can't expand like that.
And it's next to their current business, that, okay. Seems straightforward.
Technicality is what we're working through. And this is the first presentation to the board, Michael? See no further questions, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, second motion.
I move to table for consideration the amendment for a second reading on July ninth. Is that the correct date?
July nine twenty, yes, we have a July ninth meeting.
July ninth, two thousand and, uh, no, that's not the...
The year is incorrect in the motion, but we all know we're talking about nineteen.
Two thousand and nineteen.
I support.
Okay, those in favor of the second motion as presented with the change into twenty nineteen, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G two. Consider Preliminary Approval of the Arbor Glen Plan Development District.
Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the following resolution for preliminary approval of a plan development for Arbor Glen. Whereas the project sponsor has requested preliminary approval of a planned development for Arbor Glen located on the northwest corner of Warren and Ridge Roads and... Whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the preliminary development plan and draft development agreement made a recommendation to approve the request with conditions as it meets the criteria for a plan development, fulfills identified needs in the community, and results in definite benefits to the community. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees, the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the request for a preliminary planned development for the Arbor Glen proposed on the tax parcel listed, tax parcels listed as shown on the concept plan and commitments outlined in the draft plan development agreement subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations, including the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission on June third, two thousand and nineteen.
Support.
The applicant proposes to locate thirty-six single residential site condominiums on the approximate thirty acres of land located northwest corner of Warren and Ridge. One entrance is proposed on Ridge Road on the south part of the site, located about four hundred foot north of Warren. And one emergency vehicle entrance is proposed on Ridge Road north part of the site, located sixteen hundred and seventy-five feet north of Warren Road. The project sponsor proposes to have, to pave Ridge Road from Warren to the southern entrance to the development. Each planned development district is required to demonstrate a definite benefits to the community. The project sponsor proposes the following definite benefits: maintaining thirty-two point six percent of the site, or twelve point three acres, as open space, which exceeds the twenty-five percent open space minimum; construct sidewalks along the west side of Ridge from Arbor Glen to Warren Road, including crosswalks across Ridge and Warren Roads to connect the existing sidewalk network to the opposite sides of those roads; preserving approximately eight hundred trees that are either protected or landmark trees, and minimizing clearing and grading along Ridge Road, which is a natural beauty road. Additionally, the plans note that landscaping along Ridge Road will consist of native species consistent with natural beauty road objectives. All right, is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, is there any board comment?
Just because I've been asked about this several times, and I just wanna clarify this in the public meeting that I'm sure people are watching, there's, is going to preserve and protect the natural beauty road, correct? Yes.
Have representatives with us this evening from Polte, and do you wanna speak further to that point? Because there's another comment I'd like to make, and...
Yeah, it might be a good idea.
Thank you, good evening. I'm Mike Knowles with Diff and Umlor, and I'm representing Polte Homes tonight. Yes, it is a natural beauty road, and the first four to five hundred feet of the road is devoid of trees. In fact, to, to put the whole development in, we're only taking five trees out of the road right-of-way. So the, we have met with the county, and we met with Dick Deon, who is a big advocate for the natural beauty road here in Canton Township. And we've met with some of the neighbors, Mr. and Mrs. Rowe, north of the property, and several other neighbors who have expressed an interest in weighing in on the landscape plan. So we're clearing a minimal amount of trees to put this development in, but we're gonna be planting over three hundred trees on the site as our replacement requirements for the tree clearing that we'll be doing internal to the site. Now those trees are primarily gonna be placed along Warren Road and along Ridge Road, and we even got the county to agree to allow us to put some in the road right-of-way, which I think might be a first. They were very cooperative. They've agreed to a rural cross-section for the paving that we're gonna be doing on Ridge Road from Warren to our entrance, which is a ditch and swale cross-section, not curb and gutter, to minimize the impact. And again, they're gonna allow some low native species plantings along it. And I really think it'll be an enhancement to the natural beauty. That road is really beautiful, if you keep traveling north, you get that tunnel effect, which is really part of what constitutes the natural beauty designation in the first place. At the beginning of the road, it's really just fallow field. And so we're really gonna be doing our part to make it a fantastic development and a scenic route to the development. So I'm here if you have any other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
I was just gonna make mention, I was reading through the minutes of the planning committee, and I know there were a lot of people, asked questions and a lot of answers. One was about having exit onto Warren Road, but you can't because of the wetlands, is that correct?
Yes, there are two things preventing us from having an, an exit out onto Warren Road. One is there's an existing wetland there that we want to preserve in its natural state. And the other is that it's, it's a very short parcel along Warren Road, and the entrance would be too close to Ridge Road to comply with county standards. So those were the two reasons. It was primarily the wetlands. We may be able to get a waiver for the distance if we pursued that, but it would be a big impact to an existing wetland system and, and a number of landmark trees as well.
Thank you, Mr. Knowles. I am very pleased that you're paving Ridge Road up into the entrance. And if our county commissioner were here tonight, and I plan on calling her on this, I'm glad that the county has asked you to do that. I know it's probably because it's the only entrance, really. But, and as I've been, as I often have said here, I think we should be requiring that of all developers because in the end, we are going to end up having to pave these roads anyway, even if there's two... anyway, even if there's two entrances. And I would caution newly appointed Director Smith that that's something that you'll hear me say a lot, and we have things going on down on Bar Road, I think, in the township where I think we should have already required developers to pave, and it's going to come up again and again. So, thank you for paving up to that point. I'm suspecting it doesn't go as far as the entrance to the sub across the street across Ridge Road, right?
It does not.
Okay.
That's about 1,500 feet north of the entrance, and we're going 400 feet.
Okay, so it's quite a distance further.
It is.
That would have been nice if it matched up, but I appreciate you doing it. And I read through, and I understand that the other access road is not going to be paved. It's just going to be for public safety access only?
It will be paved, but it will...
Oh, it will be paved, okay.
But it will be gated.
Okay.
It is only for a public safety access.
And that's on the northern, that little sliver of property?
It is. The existing crop driveway is the location for...
Oh, it's a driveway now?
Yeah, it's existing driveway. It'll be a little bit wider than the driveway. It needs to be 20 feet wide for the emergency access vehicles, and it has been requested to be paved for maintenance purposes.
And I noticed, last question, that the trucks for construction, it said it wouldn't be using the main entrance. Will it be using that other entrance?
No, no, no. We will be using the main entrance.
Oh, you will?
The concern was, they didn't want us to use that as a construction access while building the site. So, we'll be using the main entrance 400 feet north, rather than the emergency access 1,600 feet north near the residence that had the concern.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Comments? Michael or John? Okay. The, thank you, both you fine gentlemen, for including the neighbors. I can tell you that you've done a good job there because things have calmed and people are rational when they call. They still don't like the development, but you've done a good job working with them and making sure that they see the benefits of what you are doing there. So, good job there. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further comments? Those in favor of the motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that was a single motion, or was that a double? Single? Okay. Item G3. Thank you. Consider approval of site plan for Canton Retail Management III, previously Hayden's.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution: the approval of the site plan for a multiple tenant commercial building, Canton Retail Management III. Whereas, the project sponsor has requested site plan approval to modify the existing restaurant site for a multiple tenant building that would incorporate general office, medical and dental clinics, training and education centers, standard bar restaurant with accessory pickup window, specialty retail, business services and personal service establishments, and general retail uses on parcel number listed, located at the southeast corner of Ford and Lot's Road. And whereas, the Planning Commission reviewed the request for site plan approval and voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the site plan, subject to revisions of the landscape plan to preserve as many of the mature trees in the roadway buffers as possible. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the site plan for Canton Retail Management on the tax parcel listed, subject to revision of the landscape plan to preserve as many of the mature trees along the roadway buffers as possible, and further subject to all applicable local and state regulations.
Support.
The application is proposing to renovate and divide existing 7,700 square-foot restaurant building into a multi-tenant commercial building. Special land use approval was granted to allow the general office, medical and dental clinics, training and education centers, standards for restaurant bar with accessory drive-through windows, specialty retail, business and personal service establishments, and general retail uses within the building. The site plan meets the entire exterior of the building. The site plan updates the entire exterior of the building, removes some parking in the rear, which would allow for loading and access to the trash enclosure. The trash enclosure would be moved directly from behind the building to the southeast corner of the site, and a pickup window lane would be added to the east side of the building. And also, I'm not seeing it here, but quite a bit of conversation regards to the number of trees and where they're presented on Ford Road. So, there's some trees coming out, but the group's going to add in some trees as well. And we have Brian Aiman here to answer any questions that the board may have. Any board questions? We've seen this a few times.
I'm just glad they're gonna keep the trees. Looks like they're just gonna remove...
Can you just give a little more details, Mr. Aiman, on the trees and the discussion?
Thank you, Brian Aiman, on behalf of the applicant. And the original landscape, or the landscape plan that was finally submitted prior to Planning Commission consideration showed removal of some of the trees. There are essentially, it breaks down into two categories of trees: trees between the DDA wall and Ford Road, and trees behind the DDA wall and Ford Road. And there's been some concern because the trees are fairly overgrown and blocking the visibility of the site. And so, some of the prospective tenants have looked at it and said, you know, we're concerned people won't even be able to see us. So, we looked at planning on removing some of those. The planning staff recommended that we actually try to retain those and just, you know, work on trimming appropriately in those areas. So, our team, our landscape architect, went and met on the site with Lee Thurston, and they worked out an agreement as to what would be trimmed, what would be dealt with. And actually, as of noon today, we submitted a final note on the detail of the plans to reflect that agreement, and so we should be all set. I think you'll see a good balance between the existing trees, proper trimming, and, you know, we want the sites to survive, we want the trees to survive, and, you know, try to do it appropriately. It was getting to the point, you know, I think when we look at some of our planning requirements, we have to be careful because sometimes we plant things so closely together they don't survive after about 12 years. And so, we're trying to get some of that cleaned up, but I think we've worked out a great agreement as to how this will work out, and everybody will be happy with the outcome.
I, only other comment was, I enjoyed seeing the actual drawings this time, and I kind of have a better idea of the concept that you had versus last time when we discussed it. Looks like they were three almost equal spaces now?
In the depiction, we could end up, the only tenant that we have really a strong pre-lease understanding with would be the potential dental user. And so, we think it'll be kind of equally divided between the three, but, you know, we're trying to set the site up for future success so it won't go dark by subdividing its uses. And so, but yeah, so it may end up being three equal, maybe some little balance in there or whatever, but we appreciate the township's flexibility in giving us the ability to protect the parking and those things. So, we're really protective for all eventualities to try to make sure this site works in the future. There was some conversation about trying to remove some parking spaces and have people park behind the drive over in the Home Depot parking lot. That's a safety issue number one, and Home Depot is just not a lot of fun to work with. They don't want to agree to give any rights to anybody to park in anything in their parking lot, even if they have open spaces by hundreds. And so, anyway, so we ended up, the Planning Commission recommended retaining those 10 spaces, and we think that would be the best thing for the site long-term, however.
Does that meet the ratios?
Yeah, we're actually a little over the parking ratio, but this site has always been a challenge parking, so it's just been hard to find a space when Hayden's and the Mexican place is in there as well. So, yeah, anyway.
Are you in a position where you can share what the restaurant may or may not be?
We have a desired use, we have, we've been approached, but we're not even, we haven't even gotten to a pre-lease conversation. They want to have a conversation with the township, and we asked them to, you know, let's, we should see whether we can even get a deal before they come and talk to you.
Very good.
And so, yeah, so we, but we, I know you've heard from a prospective user, we haven't engaged in anything other than...
Lot of rumors floating.
Yeah, yeah. We've heard from our prospective users, and we've said, until we actually get site plan approval and we know we have the ability to have a real conversation, we won't even have that, and then we'll see how that plays out. So, we're cognizant of all the township's corporate overlay, district requirements and stuff, and we want to be respectful of that entire process.
With regard to the drive-through window, so it's an accessory drive-through window?
Right.
From what I understand, that's different than a typical drive-through window?
Yeah, and it's, when you look at the township ordinance standards as to drive-through and those kinds of things, literally, you try to figure out how much of the business could go there. And interestingly enough, it's considered accessory because it's assumed that less than 50% of the business of that restaurant would come through the drive-through, thus making it accessory versus majority. But, in fact, you never really know how that's going to play out. So, for example, the Starbucks, which is kitty-corner to the site, was approved in the same manner. But actually, the experience has shown that over 65% of their business comes through the drive-through. Although, as approved as accessory, it still functions as a site. It actually reduces the parking demand and the site flows, and that's why we have, so the township balances that out with making sure there's substantial stacking in the drive-through lane, so we can stack at least 10 cars in a drive-through, if for some reason the drive-through does become the predominant form of business. Being near a freeway and sometimes morning and evening work, that's not a total shock, but it's, but by design, the thought is that, you know, more than not, people are going to go and sit down, order food, eat, that kind of a thing, and the window is essentially an added value if they want to use it. So, yeah.
Further questions? Those in favor of the motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And it's a single motion or a second?
Single.
Single, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Item G4. Consider special land use in site plan for Imagine Super E-Max Expansion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution: a special land use approval and site plan approval for Imagine Super E-Max Expansion. Whereas, the project sponsor, Mr. Paul Glance, has requested special land use approval and site plan approval for the Imagine Super E-Max Expansion to be located on the tax parcel listed pursuant to the information and plans provided. And whereas, the Planning Commission found the proposed special land use and site plan to be consistent with the development objectives of the township and recommended approval, subject to approval by the city of Westland for the portion of the Imagine site in Westland. And whereas, the Township Board has reviewed the proposed special use and site plan and determines the proposal to be consistent with the zoning ordinance and regulations and development objectives, subject to any conditions described in the analysis and recommendation attached hereto and made a part hereof. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the request of the project sponsor, Mr. Paul Glance, for the special land use and site plan for the Imagine Super E-Max Expansion on the tax parcel listed, subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations, including approval by the city of Westland for the portion of the Imagine site in Westland.
Support.
That was a very detailed motion, so therefore, I'm not even going to read the executive summary or the background on this one. Do we have a representative here with us this evening? Okay, Leslie Zawada, who's a professional engineer, civil engineering for Engineering Solutions, that you're working with Mr. Glance on this project?
I'm the engineer record, and we also have David Zalstra. He's the chief technology officer for Imagine Theaters.
This is one where it's, it is unique in terms of being the residents or the customers will come in through the Canton address to go watch a movie on the biggest screen, right, in the region in Westland. So, also, we've got...
Can we put a toll?
Well, I've asked Mayor Wild, and I have been talking about a welcome to Canton, welcome to Westland sign in the middle of the hallway, which I'm hoping Paul will do for us. But the, that being said, is there's been a tremendous amount of work between the two communities, A, getting excited about it, and the building department, public safety folks, inspection, and a lot of logistics, technical stuff behind the scenes, that everybody's working very closely together. Westland has given the approvals on their side, and this is the first introduction to our board tonight. So, the Imagineers, what'd you say?
I just said, correct, about...
Okay. So, questions for Imagine folks?
I told my son about the theater. He's 14. He's very excited about it, but I didn't tell him that the big screen was in Westland, so...
Flying full down when it goes left.
I, I guess the only question, excited, and I saw it'll be hopefully ready in time for Star Wars, so...
Yes, Star Wars.
But I guess my only question would be actually for Director Trumbull, which is, I don't know, are there any tax or property tax implications for us on this? Like, are...
I think the majority of the expansion is actually in Westland, so they're going to get the benefit, so the assessor is going to have to...
Oh, it's calculated based on the proportional of the square footage?
Correct.
WCA does Westland as well as ours, so whatever square footage building is in Westland, they get, and whatever's in ours, we get.
I see. Okay. But we won't lose what we've already...
Correct.
...are getting today. Okay.
In minutes, I noticed you have plenty of parking spaces. I know that would be a question a lot of folks will be wondering, but you're, actually, you have more. You need 678, but you will have 860, so that's good news. Yes. Great. Wonderful.
24-seat screening room, that's separate?
Yes, it's officially two different screens that are proposed. There's a small screening room that's just outside the very large screen that's proposed that, and David can explain more of the use, but it's really for private parties and events and, but you could take all of your friends and go there, but that is available also as part of the expansion. So, there would be a total of 20 theaters with the two proposed if they're approved.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
I just want to commend you on using the full cutoff shades on the outdoor lighting. One of the things that concerns me a little bit as we move forward, people talk about the development in Canton Township. Some love it, some find it challenging. People talk about what it means for the roads, what it means for the demand on public safety, what it means for tax revenue. One of the things we don't really talk about a lot is light pollution, and I really think that at some point, we're going to have to talk about that, especially as we pivot towards LED lights, because they put off a little bit different of a glare than old lights. This obviously isn't an issue. You guys are on Ford Road, so I'm not talking to you right now. I'm talking to the board. My apologies. But when we approve schools, or when we don't approve schools, but when schools come in or when religious institutions come into residentially zoned area, my office gets a lot of calls from residents about lighting, and I would like to see at some point zoning in general revisit Section 2.213 of the zoning ordinance when it comes to, A, what the glare and light restrictions are going to be on these buildings, and B, how we enforce them. Because currently, we, I believe, we enforce them as they are built or as the architect submits the plans, and, or how the site plan is submitted, and not actual meter reads. And that's something that concerns me, when those two numbers don't coincide. So, at some point, I would love to have a deeper conversation about that from a policy standpoint.
Future talking points for Jay. Thank you. All right. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, item G5. Consider award of contract to Brigade Bidagir Contractors, Inc., for the 2019 Water Main Capital Improvement Project. And we've got Charles LaRope with us this evening, and is that a typo? Am I saying that right? Bidagir Contractors?
Bidagiri?
Yeah, Bidagiri, that's the name. Okay, very good. All right, so...
In the form of two motions. First, the budget amendment. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment: increase the expenses to the capital outlay infrastructure account in the amount of $476,402, and increase revenue in the fund balance appropriations account for the amount of $476,402. Sorry.
Okay. The 2018 Water Main Master Plan identified a number of projects necessary to meet the existing and future water demands of our customers. In addition to the master plan, the staff is constantly evaluating locations and experiencing multiple main breaks in relatively small areas. Multiple locations of high priority for replacement include those sections of pipe that experience five breaks in any one mile of pipe. The staff is recommending awards of contracts to Bidagiri Contractors, Inc., in 2019 Water Main Capital Improvement Project for an amount not to exceed $1,476,402, which includes 20% contingency, as well as engineers' estimate costs to replace the pavement of two courts as required by Wayne County to access the old water mains. And then Charles is also here, if there are any questions. Any questions for Charles? Seeing none. Those in favor of the first motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award a contract to Bidagiri Contractors Incorporated for the 2019 Capital Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed $1,476,402, and further... the 2019 Capital Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed $1,476,402, and further authorize yourself, the township supervisor, or myself, the clerk, to sign the contract on behalf of the Charter Township of Canton.
If either the second motion is presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Charles, thank you very much, sir. Have a good night, that was light duty for you tonight. G six, request to consolidate and upgrade Adobe licensing.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order in the amount of $20,000 payable to CDW Government for the purchase of Adobe Acrobat licensing.
Okay, in summary, it's time to update our 2019 license. Are there any questions for Ms. Wendy Trumbull?
Just say, as someone who had an issue with Adobe this week, reading this packet, and I was talking to the IT staff about it, I guess it's a good thing we're doing this.
Yeah, we have a number of departments in the past that would upgrade as individual departments needed it, so we're trying to consolidate that and have IT update the entire township, because the problem is when one person has an upgrade, updating, somebody does not, they can't have the same package, they can't see the same thing, they don't have the same functionality. So we're trying to upgrade everybody and get everybody updating at the same time.
Further comments, those in favor of the motion presented, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G seven, request to upgrade Microsoft Server licensing.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order in the amount of $60,538 to CDW Government for the purchase of Microsoft Server 2019 software licenses and the required number of client access licenses.
Same as the last, but this is the Microsoft Server Operating System licenses. Any questions for Director Trumbull? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G eight, consider approval of administration building Wi-Fi upgrades.
In the form of three motions, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment, increase revenues to the fund balance appropriation account listed for $7,741, increase expenditures to the capital outlay computers and equipment account listed in the amount of $50,803, and decrease expenditures in the maintenance and repair software support account number listed for $43,062.
The IT Services Department is requesting approval to purchase necessary Wi-Fi equipment and services to improve Wi-Fi coverage within the administration building. I am requested that the IT Services improve Wi-Fi throughout the building in 2018. The process begun with the performance of the Wi-Fi survey and will be complete with purchasing of hardware, software, licensing, and professional services requested by this Board of Action, so if anybody's ever been caught in a dead spot in the building, you'll appreciate it when it gets done. Are there any comments or questions? Go ahead, Stephen.
I would just say, this is actually the one thing that I do for a living. Actually, it's probably the biggest thing I do in my job, and I would be interested in someday sitting down with Joe and just talking about the technology used to monitor the Wi-Fi networks, because you can actually have the Wi-Fi network monitor itself, and the access points monitor each other for signal strength and channel use and things like that. So, I'd be interested in talking to him about that, or whoever is appropriate.
I'm sure Joe is much more appropriate than myself.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm surprised you didn't have a larger discussion with me on that, but, but thanks.
Thank goodness for this.
Yeah.
Very good, those in favor of the first motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of wireless network equipment, software, licensing, professional services to CDW in an amount not to exceed $35,708, and networking wiring to Vector Technology Group in an amount not to exceed $15,095, to improve Wi-Fi networking capabilities within the Township Administration Building.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
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 Carries, third motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the continued use of CDW Government for potential future Wi-Fi expansion projects for a period of time not to exceed five years from this date.
Support.
Favor of the third motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is G nine, consider approval to increase blanket purchase order for bulk rock salt.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the increase to purchase order number 2019-774 for bulk rock salt from Wayne County, accounts receivable 500 Griswold, 20th floor, Detroit, Michigan, 48226, in the amount of $5,101, for a purchase order total of $45,101.
This is for purchases of salts for maintaining our lots and properties in Canton Township properties. The cost for the bulk rock salt was $51.93 per ton in the 2016-17 year. The cost for 2018-19 season has increased 77% to $107.46 a ton. Invoices received from Wayne County for bulk rock salt for this season's 41,000, total 41,100.56, therefore, we're requesting an additional $5,101 to purchase the, to fund the current change, plus an additional $4,000 increase to fund potential salt expenditures for November and December of this year. Questions, Brad, why is such an increase in the salt?
The commodity, I guess, like, on the Chicago and the other commodity, yeah.
No further questions or comments, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G 10, consider approval of contract for elevator modernization Canton Administration Building.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award the contract for the elevator modernization at the Canton Administration Building project to Great Lakes Elevator, 530 East Grand River Road, Williamson, Michigan, 48895, for $98,300, with funds to be paid from the account number listed, capital outlay buildings and improvements using the $90,000 budget dollars, and $8,500 left over from the administration lower level ceiling tile replacement project.
Support.
In 2019, proposals were solicited for the elevator modernization project at our building here. Three companies, Otis Elevator, Five Points Elevator, and Great Lakes Elevator responded to the request. All three companies were interviewed by township staff and their proposals were discussed. After lengthy discussion, staff determined the Great Lakes Elevator provided the most thorough proposal and was within the original budget scope of the project. If anybody has any questions, Brad can also address those for us this evening. Go ahead, Michael.
I would just like to say that that forty-year-old elevator, I'm glad we are modernizing that, that thing is a ticking time bomb periodically, it goes down at interesting times, so.
One back here.
Yes.
Okay.
Did the board approve this?
Here the motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G 11, consider purchase order, purchase order approval for invasive species removal.
In the form of two motions, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendments, increase expenditures to the FCGC Maintenance and Repair Grounds Fund in the amount of $3,803, increase expenditures to the PRGC Maintenance Air Grounds Account for $6,435, and a decrease in expenditure to the transfer to fund balance account in the amount of $10,238.
In terms of background, Fragmites is an aggressive invasive wetland plant that quickly spread through Canton's natural areas located throughout the parks, trails, and through our golf courses, robbing fish and plants and wildlife of nutrients and spirits. Steps to remove the Fragmites is done through spray application every fall, once the vegetation goes to seed. Canton applied the spray in the fall of 2018 and has future plans of spraying again this fall and next year. Are there any questions for Brad?
Do they just spray once a, in the fall, one time?
Yeah, that's the best time to spray.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Couldn't just get you and John out there in waders and a few shovels?
You're boss of most things, they're a lot of things.
Really?
Brad?
John, jump in here anytime, buddy.
He's doing a great job, I'm appreciating the deference, that's good.
My line of sight, you're off to the side. Okay. Any additional questions for John or Brad this evening? Seeing none, those in favor of the first motion, say aye.
Aye.
And this is a couple, is that all, no, is that one more here? Yeah.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order and allow wild-type design native plants and seeds limited at 900 North Everie Road, Mason, Michigan, 48854, to start the removal process of Fragmites at Fellows Creek Golf Club, Canton Parks, Pheasant Run Golf Club, and the Lower Roos Trail in the amount of $21,256 to be taken from the following accounts. Fellows Creek Golf Club, using account number listed for maintenance and repair grounds invasive species management, in the amount of $3,803. Pheasant Run Golf Club, using the account number listed for maintenance and repair grounds invasive species management, in the amount of $6,435. Lower Roos Trail account, using the account number listed for maintenance of stream banks in the amount of $3,413. And Parks, using the account number for maintenance and repair for grounds account in the amount of $7,605.
Favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G 12, consider approval of adding security gate operator with card access controller and the security upgrades to the Parks Golf Maintenance Facility at Heritage Park.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase from Interstate Security Incorporated at 51233 Oro Drive, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48315, to purchase and install an electric gate operator, new lighting, and enhanced security system at the Parks Golf Maintenance Facility. Funds for the electronic gate operator and lighting will be paid from the account number listed for capital outlay land improvements in the amount of $33,385, and the security improvements will be paid from the account, from the account number listed for capital outlay building improvement in the amount of $15,465.
Support.
Those, again, are very detailed motion, so I don't, we have not had any security issues as of late. We did a few years back, things have been fairly calm, but this is a good upgrade, John. Is there anything that I'm not aware of? Any loss of assets that we should be aware of?
No, it's just confusing for folks, I want to drive back, we have to keep the gate open pretty much all day long, and the evening, so that our staff can get in and out, it's a very difficult gate to operate, it's very heavy, so staff are having to put everything they have into opening and closing that gate, so this will allow us to automate it and have swipe access like we do for many of our entrances here in the building for staff. So, we've got a ton of assets back there that, of course, we're trying to protect and keep protected, but it's also a dead end to Heritage Drive, so we do get a lot of traffic that goes back there, so those should just allow us to keep the gate shut and make sure that the appropriate people are able to access, and those that aren't, can't.
Questions, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G 13, consider approval of emergency repair of Heritage Park from Liberty Fest and budget amendment, boy, that's poorly written, I should have proofed that closer. Consider approval, all right, this is paving, no, this is repair to the damage done for the honorable rides and what have you, okay. Motion, sir.
All right, I'm going to start with the purchase order first. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order for the restoration of Heritage Park in an amount not to exceed $44,000 to be paid from the account number for Parks Maintenance and Repair Grounds with Reliable Landscaping, 8285 Lilly Road, Canton, Michigan, 48187.
Support.
Previously stated, Liberty Fest was, again, wildly successful, even with the poor weather we had and shutting the event down Thursday. I'm surprised that the amount of damage is as little as it is compared to how wet and mushy things have been, and if anybody's driven back there, you can see the crews have already been trying to level things off and bring it back to an acceptable level, so this will allow them to finish that up. Are there any questions for John?
This, where's the, this isn't going to be from the general fund, any money's from the general fund for this, correct?
No.
This conversation I had with Greg was to find an offset within his existing budget dollars, and he was able to do that, which ones are identified here?
Parks Maintenance and Repair Grounds account, so it's a Parks account.
We were able to take some unspent dollars due to a grant received and reallocate those funds, so not looking for any additional funds from the general fund itself.
With the realignment of budgets. Seeing no further questions, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Supervisor, I further move to approve the following budget amendment, increase expenditures to the maintenance and repair grounds account in the amount of $44,000, increase in expenditures to the professional contractual services for special events account in the amount of $6,000, a decrease in expenditure, in expenditures to the capital outlay buildings and improvement fund in the amount of $50,000, a decrease in expenditures to the transfer to community improvement fund in the amount of $50,000, and decrease revenue in transferred from general fund in the amount of $50,000.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please say aye.
I actually have a, I'm sorry, I do have a quick question, and I should have brought it up when we were approving the PO. So, there is, so there's $50,000 not going into the community improvement fund? So, can we?
Yeah, so, Community Improvement Fund initially had $50,000 of projects for the Human Services Center. There were CDBG dollars available to pay for that, so we are not going to transfer the $50,000 into community improvement from the general fund, therefore, it was leaving money in general fund.
Wanted to make sure, sorry, okay, that's the grant, good stuff.
The second motion has been read, and supported, I believe, yes? Yes, Diane, okay, so those in favor of the second motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G 14, the description, or the item description here tells us the whole story. Consider first reading of ordinance to amend Chapter 46, Article 4 of the Canton Code of Ordinances to update fireworks ordinance to comply with the changes, recent changes to state law.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce for first reading an ordinance which amends Chapter 46, Article 4 of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
Support.
What the state law changed recently was, was to reduce the number of hours and the number of days that they considered holidays, so this, all we're doing is getting our local ordinances to align for our public safety department, state law, so they can enforce. Questions, comments? I'm already starting to get complaints about the Fourth of July fireworks starting early, so. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
carries. Item G fif, oops.
Second motion. Mr. Supervisor, I move to table for consideration the proposed text amendment to the Code of Ordinances and to schedule a second reading for July 9, 2019.
Support.
If either the second motion is presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G 15, consider request to purchase equipment to stock the new fire engine.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of the attached fire engine equipment list from Halt Fire Incorporated in the amount of $13,216.92, utilizing funds in the 2019 Fire Capital Outlay Machinery and Equipment Account.
Support.
This allows our fire department to get the fire truck road ready, correct?
Correct.
Any questions for this?
Can we drive it?
Come on over.
He can drive it, he won't give me lights and he can drive it.
We'll let Brad answer that question.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G six. Consider purchase replacement for carpet for fire stations one and three.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of replacement carpet at fire stations number one and number three in the amount of $24,349 from independent carpet, one utilizing funds, budgeted in the 2019 Fire Capital Outlay Buildings and Improvement Account.
Support.
Okay, as the motion reads, the details are there, this needs to be done, was delayed, and now we're finally catching up. Are there any questions for Director Stockline? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I have a single motion, so G seventeen. I have a single motion, so, G 17. Seeing, consider approval, or consider approving request for stabilization of the gun range berm slope.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve Dan Joe Construction to reconstruct and stabilize the berm slope at the gun range for a total of $29,445, utilizing funds in the 2019 Police Capital Outlay Building and Improvements Account.
Okay, um, in terms of, uh, summary, the police department, upon recommendation of facilities maintenance, and a private consulting engineer is requesting the gun range berm be reconstructed and the slopes stabilized. Upon review of the request for proposal through interview process, Dan Joe again was selected for proposing the lowest cost for a suitable solution for the berm stabilization at 29445, and if we have any, uh, questions for Deputy Chief, he's available to answer. It's long-term, George Miller would be happy we're getting this done, all right. Seeing no further questions, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That's our formal agenda for the evening, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any staff comment?
I just, uh, wanna thank the board for approving, uh, my RBA at the last board meeting, I was unable to attend as my wife was giving birth to our son, so, hopefully I had an excuse to not be here, but, um, we're mailing all of the, um, registered voters in Canton Township who are not currently on the permanent absentee list, and, uh, this will allow them the opportunity, if they so choose, to sign up for it, because voters approved Proposal Three in November of last year, which eliminated the requirement to have a reason to vote absentee, uh, so now, we shouldn't even call it absentee, because you don't have to be out of, out of the community anymore, but, just voting by mail, so, people can join that permanent list. Um, other communities have done it, like Grand Rapids, they saw, uh, 10 percent of the people who they had mailed responded back, uh, so it increased the list, pretty sizable, so it, it will probably, uh, increase engagement in the elections process in Canton Township, will more than likely drive up voter turnout as well, uh, and it makes it easier for people to vote, they can vote from home.
I'll just say that, I've never thought I'd say this, but it's been good to see road construction on the roads in Canton, um, there's a lot of good work happening in our community.
Driving on that asphalt on Lilly Road, oh, that felt good, it was fantastic.
Everybody have a safe 4th of July? Further business, uh, call for a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
If they're, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, be safe.